...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Role Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Elder woman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Yeah.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Coramus present.
Good correspondence.
We have a letter this evening from Kevin Gleason thanking the school district, thanking the council and the city for supporting the recent talk soccer tournament.
Okay, for the goodness city, I would like to invite Mr. Ed Estrada, the school board president. Up.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the city council, Mayor DiStefano, Chief Fuwanchu. Amy Creed, our superintendent of schools, was going to be joining us this evening. Unfortunately, she fell ill today, so she couldn't join us. So I wanted to stop by and make it a point that over the last couple of months, as many of you know, we've had some difficult times in our school district. We've lost a couple of students over the last couple of weeks. We have another one who isn't doing too well in one of our local hospitals. And we had a faculty member lose their child due to a car accident in a neighboring school district. So it's been really difficult for our school district. And when those things happen, you look to support from anywhere that you can find it. And I came here this evening to thank all of you personally on behalf of the school district and the mayor and Chief Fuwanchu for what all you guys have done in support of our school district for many, many decades, but especially over the last several months in support of our students, in support of our faculty. I've been part of this community for practically my whole entire life, and I'm about as proud of it today as I've ever been because of that cooperation and that support. Every time we turn around, the city of Middletown is always there. The police department is always there. Each of you folks in your respective wards are always there, knowing that you have our back. So I did want to come out and just say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We'll continue to work hard to make all of you proud of us as a school district, just like we're proud of being part of this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Okay, for the goodness city, anyone else would like to speak? Please step forward. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jason, and I live in Ward Four. This is the seventh consecutive meeting where our community is here once again to call on you to pass a ceasefire resolution. With Trump's recent win, he is already lining his cabinet with pro-Israel picks, so our window to stopping this genocide is increasingly diminishing. Despite what inconvenience we may have caused this body by lobbying on the matter, I've never felt more resolute about our efforts taken to unify our city around a ceasefire to protect both Palestinian and Israeli lives. Alderman Tobin, I understand your pet peeve about people leaving meetings early, and I'm grateful for the majority of the folks who have the capacity to stay the entire time despite not being paid. But I too have a pet peeve, which is people coming here to speak out only to be ignored by their representatives. People already feel disempowered and disparaged by our federal government, and it's demoralizing to feel the same apathy from local representatives. We're grateful for the vocal support of previous council member Vanessa Sid, and I hope each of you can find the courage to speak tonight. We're running out of time. As a working-class citizen, I have gone above and beyond to mobilize my neighborhood. People are showing up, they're angry, and with the recent election results, they're scared and feel powerless. With our country descending towards fascism, Americans now more than ever need to work to uplift each other and build solidarity. For 76-plus years, Israel has committed ethnic cleansing, apartheid, and settler colonial violence against Palestinians. Tonight, Middletown says enough. Let the record show that the constituents here tonight, wholeheartedly and unequivocally stand against genocide. And so to the crowd here tonight and to the folks following at home, we're not stepping down. And if those in positions and power refuse to act based on their own moral compass, we must persist in our efforts to persuade them to act in accordance with our shared values of justice and equality. Join me again Tuesday, December 3rd. Let's continue to reach out to the community and build momentum. We will not stop until we get a ceasefire. Middletown stands with Palestine. Thank you.
Shawn Kelleher was a cut above the rest as far as English teachers go. Wise beyond his years and smart as a whip. And I remember one day, he told me something that I'll never quite forget.
Can you just state your name for the record and where you're from?
Sure. My name's Adam Byrne, and this is my city. He said to me, he said to the class, rather, "Do you know what we call Nazis who never took up arms against a Jew, who never went to a rally, who kept on living as Hitler came to power?" And I didn't know. I asked him what. He said, "We call them Nazis." As the bombings continue to grow louder, I ask you, would you like to meet the man who kept on living? Would you feel safe in the same room as him? Would you forgive him for his transgressions? Or would you even see them as transgressions at all? Six million Jews are dead, and he but looks on without a thought behind his unfeeling gaze. Are they even human anymore? History has its eyes on all of you. And I should hate to return again and seek an audience with those who kept on living.
Hi, my name is Judy Ronay, and I'm a proud member, as you can see, of the Midey community. I taught in Middletown for 22 years. Seems that most of the people here that are protesting against Israel and against America, if they're protesting against Israel, are, their position, they don't live in this city and frankly should not be hijacking committee intent on discussing how best to use, because this is what you do, community tax dollars to improve infrastructure, education, and joyfully diverse cultural programs for our residents. But since these ill-informed people are here, let me address the community with some facts. Jews, biblical Abraham and families, lived in Israel, AKA Judea, for 3,899 years. Jewish land and people had been violently conquered and expelled from Israel numerous times. Roman conquests, 63 B.C., they renamed Israel Palestinea. That was 1,813 years after Abraham. Israel became a state in May 14th, 1948, three weeks after my oldest brother was born and three years after my parents barely survived the Holocaust. My grandparents, dad's side, were murdered in Auschwitz. My three uncles, one aunt, were also murdered during the Holocaust. If Israel existed then and were able to defend themselves as they are doing now, I would have much more family to love and to be loved by. Another fact, the Holocaust was a systematic state-sponsored genocide and murder of 6 million Jews. Don't use the terms Holocaust and genocide unless you understand the historical meaning of these events. And don't teach them to your children. And I'm so sad, I'm even going off of what I have here, I'm so sad to see children here advocating for the destruction and for the murder and for so people's
Point of order.
bombs. The Holocaust was not a war against terrorists, as Israel is defending itself from now. The Gaza War began the day after October 7th, when terrorists backed by Arab countries murdered in the bloodiest, most torturous, and inhumane way, 1,200 innocent civilians of many religions and ethnicities. And then they abused, raped, dismembered 251 more, people taking them hostage. Now there is still 101 hostages there, including 10 Americans, and that's what we should be talking about and trying to, in one voice, freeing the hostages that are still there.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
So yes, free Palestine, but free them from Hamas.
Good evening. My name is Bill Chiplinski, and as I said one time before, I'm a proud Jew and a proud Zionist. I would like to take, it's hard to go through all of the things that are not particularly clear or even true. First of all, I object the obscenity of you people using the word Holocaust for the people that have died in Gaza. The fact is that all those people are victims of Hamas. Hamas started the war, and Hamas, being a very, very fanatical cause, but a bunch of cowards, which is what they are, decided to live in tunnels while the people that are trying to eliminate them, unfortunately have eliminated about 30,000 real Hamas fighters, but they used their own families, and they'll confess it. The leaders of Hamas said exactly that. We need more victims, because that's what attracts people in the Western world. The fact is that Arabs have been on the other side of the genocide from the beginning. For more, most of you are not aware, the fact is that the Arab population was an ally of the Hitler hordes. As a matter of fact, the chief of the, of the community by the name of Hahamin Al Huseni, after he fled Iraq dressed as a woman, spent the rest of the war in Berlin as a guest of Hitler. As a matter of fact, this is exactly a problem. We're not looking at genocide, and of course, we have a, the question is, why is this the only genocide that these people identify? They're not fighting for the genocide against the Syrians, where Assad killed 250,000 people. They're not looking at the genocide committed by Arabs against the, in Sudan, or the Turks right now bombarding their own citizens. The fact is that the guilty, guilty people are Hamas, and these are the people that if they just dropped their arms, there would be peace tomorrow. And the fact is that, as was said before, Jews have lived there all the time. There was an interesting cartoon, that the Jews are so, so clever that they actually put their ruins underneath the Palestinian ruins, which means that the fact is
Gonna wrap it up?
Yes. The fact is
No, that's it. Three minutes are up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Steve Swift. I'm from Bleedingburg. I attend the Middletown Islamic Center weekly, and my wife shops here. Well, I shop here when I do the shopping. December 14th, 2012, nearly 12 years ago. Anyone remember that? December 14th. Sandy Hook Elementary, 26 dead, 20 children, six adults. Since then, we've seen the faces of the children and their parents many times. Some of the first graders that survived just voted for the first time after a photo opportunity with Kamala Harris. Three weeks ago, in a place called Beit LaHim in north Gaza, a five-story apartment block was leveled by bombs. 90 people were killed, 45 injured, 25 children were among the dead. Why? There was a suspicious man with binoculars on the roof. That's why they bombed that building. Unlike Sandy Hook, we won't see the children's faces or know their names. Their relatives will not receive settlements from Remington or Alex Jones. They won't meet with Kamala Harris, and they won't receive an apology. These tragedies are alike, though, in this way. They both tell us that it's our responsibility to protect children by doing whatever we can. A ceasefire and arms embargo is symbolic but sends a clear message. The citizens of Middletown demand that children be protected wherever they may live. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Council. My name is Mia Rosario, and I am a resident of Chester, New York. And I do spend a lot of my time in Middletown and do attend SUNY Orange. At the end of the day, we're not going to stop coming here until a ceasefire resolution is brought upon us. Because that's the least that we can do. I don't care who you are. I don't care what you believe. I don't care about the logistics. I don't care about the history. I care about the fact that human beings and children and innocent people are being murdered and bombed and destroyed right now. I care that I'm seeing children without their heads and without their faces, that I'm seeing mothers weeping over shrouds of their dead family members and their dead children and their dead husbands. I care about that. And there's nothing on God's green earth that will ever convince me that anything would ever make that okay. And at the end of the day, what is happening in Gaza and what is happening with the Israeli military continuing to antagonize and attack other surrounding countries and including what is happening in Lebanon as well, the families and the people that are being murdered in Lebanon, it is creating regional conflict and it is spreading wider. So not only does that threaten the Palestinians and the Lebanese, but it also threatens Israelis. Everyone's life is at stake here. And our money and our taxes is going to fund this. Nothing about that is okay. There is nothing wrong with sitting here and saying that we want the killing to end. There is nothing wrong with sitting here and saying that we, as the United States, understand that what we are doing in aiding Israel in this genocide is illegal. Under our law, it is illegal. What we are doing is wrong. The International Criminal Court, the International Court of Justice, Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, they all say the same thing. What we are doing is wrong. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about it. There's no way to cut it to make it look prettier. I don't have a perfect answer, but I'll start with saying ceasefire now. And arms embargo now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mohammed. I am a Palestinian-American, and I am a resident of Middletown. I am here today as a representative of We the People of America, Supporters for Palestine. I speak on behalf of countless voices calling for an immediate ceasefire and the urgent delivery of humanitarian aid to Gaza. Every day this resolution is delayed is another day of unnecessary suffering and losses. Gaza is in ruins. Entire neighborhoods are reduced to rubble, and families have been torn apart. Over 1.5 million people have been displaced with nowhere safe to go. Hospitals overwhelmed with lacking the basic supplies to treat the injured. And children are being fitted with prosthetics because they're losing their limbs at an alarming rate. Gaza is now the highest rate of children amputees in the world, making up 50% of the death rate in Gaza. This is not a tragedy. This is a humanitarian catastrophe. People are without food, clean water, electricity, basic medical supplies. The winter is approaching, and without shelter or heat, the vulnerable children and elder and the sick will not survive. This is not about politics. This is about saving lives. The ceasefire resolution is critical as it allows humanitarian aid to reach those who need it, most to prevent further unnecessary deaths. A ceasefire is just a pause in violence in the moral imperative, and it creates space for humanitarian quarters and enabling food, water, medicine, and shelter for those who are suffering. It offers families a chance for find safety and prevent complete collapse of the region already fagile healthcare and infrastructure. To vote against this resolution is to turn a blind eye to the suffering of millions. It is ignore the pleas of doctors who cannot save lives because they don't have the tools or resource. It tells families to search for their loved ones under the rubble and that their pain is not enough to warrant action. Rejecting this resolution sends a dangerous message that lives, innocent civilian lives, are expendable, and the politic matter more than the people. The truth is refusing this act deepens the humanitarian crisis, fuels instability, and makes peace a distant dream. Leadership is making hard decisions in the face of advertisers. Today, the decision is clear. This is not a war on religion, nor is this a game. It's about ensuring the innocent men, women, and children of Palestine to live without a fear. I urge you to approve this resolution for political, not for political gain, but for the preservation of human life. I thank you all.
She wants to say something first.
Sure.
Okay, Fifi. Her name is Fifi. She's eight years old. She skipped hip-hop, by the way, to come here tonight. And go ahead, Fifi, say what you want to say.
Israel bombed USA, pay.
Go ahead.
How many kids did you kill today?
So that's the chant. Israel bombs, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today? That's the chant. She's chanting. So, all right, and I'm separate than her. Good evening. I have three children in the Middletown College, and I'm an Orange County resident. My name is Warda. I'm Palestinian. I'm American, and I'm a mother here to be the voice for the voiceless. I spoke at the last meeting, and I'm back because the pain in my heart has only grown stronger. So I stand here today not just for myself, but all the mothers and children in Gaza who have no voice in this room, no voice in this country, and no voice in this world. Look around you. We are all human. We all have love, fear, and hope. As a mother, I get to go home to my kids. I get to see them grow, to kiss them goodnight, to plan for their future. But the mothers in Gaza, they don't have that chance. They wake up every day in fear, not knowing if they're going to see their children alive the next day, not knowing if their homes are still standing when they return. While our children go to school, they play sports, they laugh with their friends, the children in Gaza, they have to worry about surviving the day. While we plan for the futures, they live in constant fear, not knowing if they're going to make it through the night. Our children dream of growing up. The children in Gaza dream only of safety, and they're dying every single day. Every mother in Gaza bury their children. That's the reality they live with. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine what it's like to kiss your child goodbye in the morning, not knowing if that's the last time you're going to see them? These mothers don't get the luxury of seeing their kids grow or planning for tomorrow. They don't, they just hope to make it through the day. So I ask you, what makes the Palestinian mother different than any other mother sitting in this room? What makes their children less worthy of our children? What makes their children less worthy of the future? We are all human. We all feel love. We all deserve peace. The children in Gaza deserve that peace. They deserve to go to school. They deserve to play and grow. I'm here today asking for one thing, and that's to demand a ceasefire. The violence, the killing, the suffering must stop. The children of Gaza deserve to live, to have a future, to be free from fear. We, as a world, must do better. We must stand for peace, for life, for the children who are dying every single day. So stand with me. Stand with the mothers of Gaza. Demand a ceasefire. Stop the genocide for every, the sake of every mother, child, and human life. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amira, and I'm a 13-year-old Palestinian from Orange County. And I am here to talk about the ongoing genocide in Palestine. 75 years of killing women, children, and innocent people. If you are not disgusted with the actions of Israel, and let alone America, then I'm sure you are, are you not sure you are human. How would it feel to not know when you can have your
Just point of order. We're all human. We're all people. We all have different backgrounds. Just continue. Please don't refer to us as this. It's real simple. I don't have to have public discussion. I can shut it down. I don't want to shut it down. I've never shut it down. So please, come up here, speak what you got to speak, and then you have your three minutes. Please.
How would it feel as a mother looking at her starving children, not knowing what to do, and that you could make a difference today? Let's just feel with the mothers of Gaza, to feel how it is to watch your children starve, to watch your children pulled out under the rubble in pieces, to watch your children that are suffering in pain, whether it be burned victims or amputees with no medicine because Israel won't let aid in. I feel horrible to be sitting here while my people are dying. About 46,000 dead, and organizations claim there are more, plus injured, hospitalized, and starving. I have family there, and every day is a waiting game. If this was happening in any other countries, or even America had this going on, I'm sure no one would watch. So why should we, why should we sit and watch the brutal murders of children every day as of right now you are complicit in a platform of silence? If you don't use the power of your voice to call for the end of this ongoing genocide, if you, if you are not disturbed, you should be to. I mean, this is a courtroom with very professional people. You guys have a voice, so please use it to say ceasefire now. How long do we have to wait and beg and beg for a ceasefire? We are funding a genocide with our tax dollars every single day. You are funding a genocide. Kids are dying. People are being dug up from under the rubble. Homes are being taken, and people in need of simply hygiene. I am an Orange County community member, and this is the least I can do to get my community to call for a ceasefire. As of right now, you are complicit in this platform of silence. Are you going to tell me right now that my family should die in Orange County? Look into your hearts and find room for the children of Palestine. You have the power to make a difference by simply saying ceasefire now, to stop killing kids. So, Orange County, will you call for a ceasefire or stand up for the genocidal psychos? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anissa Noto. I was born and raised in Cornwall, New York. I also went to college at Orange County Community College and finished my master's in social work in Miami, Florida. I just want to talk about the children. I have worked with traumatized children for 30 years. Child abuse, pedophilia, starvation, everything I thought I saw. I never thought it would be to the extent that what I'm looking at now. I was a foster mother to over 10 children. Abused, couldn't look, all they did was shake. When I see those little children shake, can't look you in the eye, they're doomed. And you guys are complicit. You sit there. I adopted a little boy. He's 21 now and in college, on my own. I would go over and adopt as many children as I could if they would let me. It is sickening that you can sit there and not vote for a fucking ceasefire.
You have point of order.
Good evening, Council. My name is Malad. I'm a Palestinian-American who made home in Middletown. I would like to tell you about the coexistence of the three major religions, Judaism, Christianity, Islam, in Palestine. When I refer to Jewish, I'm speaking about individuals who adhere to Judaism, recognizing that the term does not imply to existence of distinct Jewish nation or people. Until the beginning of the 20th century, Jewish, Christian, and Muslim coexisted in remarkable harmony within the land known as Palestine. This vibrant coexistence marked by shared cultural tradition was testament to the spirit of the community in the region. Although the area later became known as an occupied Palestine, it will be once again recognized simply as Palestine, where deserved faith is can thrive together. The influx of Jewish Zionists to Palestine began as they fled the prosecution in what's referred now as the Free West. There were, they were in desperate needs, hungry, without a place to call home, unwell. We opened our hearts and shared our homes and meals with them, hoping to bring some comfort in their times of hardship. They ultimately stole our land, food, culture, leaving us to bear the burden of the loss of displacement. They were led to believe they are the chosen ones with the world around them exists solely to cater to their needs. The support for them, your support for them will not go without consequences. There is saying, you do not need to touch the fire to realize it, it burns. We proudly call ourselves intelligent animals because we, because our ability to learn from others' mistakes. We must, we must take decisive action to stop the beast who disregards every moral and international law, believing he is above all the regulation. To ascend the ladder, we must start at the very first step. The journey starts now here in this room. Before it's too late to make a difference and safeguard the loved ones, we must call for ceasefire resolution now. One more thing, I would like to thank everyone who came to this meeting in support of our cause, especially Jason and Amanda, who made it all possible. Thank you.
Hello, how you guys doing today? My name is Mayor Jamal. I am a Middletown resident. I lived here basically all my life. I volunteered in multiple events that happened within the city of Middletown, the Police and Kids Day. I volunteered handing out lunches to people at the park, you know? I'm a very active member in our community and I'm not here to share my opinion. I'm here to talk logical matter. So sending our tax money to Israel isn't necessarily the best of our interests, right? For example, you drive outside nowadays, you can't even drive 10 miles without hitting a pot road on the wall, a pot road, pothole on the road and having a flat tire and having to spend like $200 at the mechanic shop. You drive down North, North Street or Wickham Avenue, you see all these homeless people outside, these kids running around with no parents, kids raising kids, kids acting as adults, young kids being in gangs and stuff. It's crazy. Instead of sending all this tax money to Israel, which is estimated to be about $158 billion so far, we could use that tax money for much greater causes. For example, it's estimated to be that if someone put $5 billion towards student loan debts, it could relieve 25 million Americans of student loan debts. Yet we decide to send tax money to Israel. If we put money in schools to mentor children, for example, children who don't have a father figure in the household, children who aren't exactly in the best place, where we could give them a mentorship program to teach them right from wrong or how to make ethical decisions, that will be a much bigger interest of our tax money where we would see a benefit in our country that will create young citizens who will help build our society and help make it stronger. Right now, we have kids being lost left and right. They're being influenced by the wrong things and yet America is doing nothing to stop this but send our tax money somewhere else, somewhere to fund a genocide. At the end of the day, whatever's going on is going on, but we have much bigger interests here that we're supposed to be focusing our funds on. Like there are police, there are a lot of police stations who lack the funding. There are a lot of police stations who are getting their funding cut as we speak. There are schools who lack the funding, teachers who have to spend money out of their own pockets in order to teach the kids properly. You know, it's insane. It's insane where we have teachers who live on a salary, a minor salary, right? Where now in 2024, we have all this inflation, all these extra expenses. We have teachers paying out of their own pocket to properly teach their children. It's insane. I think we could use our tax money properly, precisely in our best interest to where we could fund, where we could benefit from it. Instead of sending it to Israel to fund a genocide, to fund a war where we simply shouldn't be a part of. Thank you and have a good day.
Good evening. My name's Carol Strauss-Sotiropoulos. I live in Monroe. I'm a 74-year-old resident of Monroe, but Middletown is my north star, where I shop, obtain medical treatment, household services, et cetera. I need not expound on my Middletown connection, but about connections, I believe the irrefutable connection between what is happening in the Middle East with respect to our tax dollars, as the dental man just explained, has been emphasized in so many countless ways. I won't waste your valuable time on this. You've just heard enough from the previous speaker, but I can't help noting a startling number that pertains to our country nationwide. Since a year ago, the U.S. has already sent $22 billion in just this last year in military funding to Israel, which is 70% of Israel's sieges, and this even though a majority of Americans support an immediate ceasefire. Imagine what our tax dollars could fund instead of war crimes and ethnic cleansing. The math is clear. Among other critical needs of our country and Middletown, of course, included, these tax dollars could fund housing to end homelessness three times over. I come to you also as a 74-year-old Jew, born of Holocaust survivors, of a people who took up the cry, "Never again," following that Holocaust. But one cannot exceptionalize the Nazi genocide from other genocides. No, no, no. Quite the opposite. Genocide runs counter to every Jewish value. Those who claim the phrase "never again" refers only to Jews are wielding it solely for political purposes. What is missing here is a full recognition of the signature question posed after World War II with respect to the Holocaust. Why did the world not stop it? Many made the claim they didn't know, for of course, there was no television or internet 85 years ago. Today, we are watching this Holocaust, and I will use that word, take place before our very eyes. We cannot look away. Recognition of ethnic cleansing makes it incumbent on us all to take whatever action we can. My relatives in Israel plead with me. Please, we are all suffering from our sieges. As a Jew, I feel this obligation most acutely. Ceasefire resolutions have been passed in over 100 communities, large and small across our country. You can Google this. There's even a Wikipedia site. We are proud that three of these are in the Mid-Hudson Valley, Kingston, Newburgh, Beacon. Please bring Middletown onto the ever-expanding list of communities who are standing up for what is right, meaning financially, responsibly, and of course morally. Thank you. I hope that you'll work together with us on the ceasefire resolution.
My name is Valerie White. I'm a resident of Walk Hill. There are four principles of the international humanitarian law. The first is do not attack non-combatants. The second is attack combatants only by legal means. The third is to treat persons in your power humanly. And the fourth is to protect the victims. Records which are not comprehensive show that Israel, the explosive weapons hit on an average homes every four hours, tents and temporary shelters every 17 hours, schools and hospitals every four days, aid distribution points and warehouses every 15 days. Throughout the last year, Israel has committed serious violations of international humanitarian law at a level which may rise to the level of crimes against humanity. This includes a level of destruction observed, which is indicative of Israel's use of disproportionate force in retaliation to military objectives and a failure to discriminate between military targets and the civilian population. Israeli military has relentlessly targeted infrastructure indispensable to civilian survival. Civilians have been forcibly displaced dozens of times to so-called safe zones that failed to meet humanitarian obligations and have also been regularly bombed or attacked. The record number of women and children killed in Gaza does not include those among nearly 20,000 people who are either unidentified, missing, or in tomb beneath the rubble. Indirect deaths, for example, due to starvation and lack of healthcare have yet to be taken into consideration. Conservative figures show that more than 6,000 women and 11,000 children were killed in Gaza by the Israeli military over the last 12 months. The UN has verified 8,119 deaths thus far and reports that 70% were women and children. Civilians' intrastuct, oh, my tongue, infrastructure has either been completely destroyed or severely damaged, including around 68% of crop land and roads. Only 17 of 36 hospitals remain. Time's up. I'm sure that most of us as Americans do not support our government's active support. I know.
Hello, my name is Thalia. I'm a resident of Poughkeepsie. I have family who live here in Middletown. I'm here because my voice in Poughkeepsie has been silenced, like many people who join me. I don't have much to say that everyone else here has not already said or will be saying. I will say that, excuse me. What's been happening in Gaza for the last 70 years has been truly appalling. You may look at me and think that I don't have much to say. I don't know what I'm talking about. I may be an extremist even, but I'd rather be an extremist than a Nazi. I'd rather be an extremist than someone who turns a blind eye, and I cannot turn a blind eye to what I have been witnessing. I have seen children hurt, dying, scared. I have seen women scared as well. I've seen them without their limbs, without their hair. I've seen American men set themselves on fire in protest to this. I've seen them scream "Free Palestine" until they could not speak anymore. That has chilled me to my bones. And I'm just appalled that this is being funded by American dollars and American weaponry put in the hands of Israeli soldiers to end the lives of Palestinian children and men and women. Thank you for your time.
I'm Sean Ryan Donnelly. I'm a resident and business owner in Port Jervis, New York. I do the majority of my shopping here in your lovely city. I'm a member of the YMCA. A man much, much wiser than me said during the Vietnam War, "Every bombed village is my hometown. Every dead child is my child. Every grieving mother is my mother. Every crying father is my father. Every home turned to rubble is the home I grew up in. Every brother carrying the remains of his brother across borders is my brother. Every sister waiting for a sister who will never come home is my sister. Every one of these people are ours, just like we are theirs. We belong to them and they belong to us." I can't say much more about the numbers. We all know it. It's on the news every day and it's on social media. We see atrocities on a daily basis, paid for with our tax dollars. The people coming here today aren't asking you to raise a rifle. We're not asking you to call the president. We are asking you to make a moral statement about an illegal action being taken by the Biden administration. The Leahy Law explicitly says that it is illegal for the American government to give money and weapons to any individual or organization that is committing human rights violations. I would ask all of you to think when the clarity of history books, long, long from now, is defined, when your children and your grandchildren look back on this and are taught about this, what will you say you did? What side will you say you were on when they asked, "What did you do? What hand did you lend to the Palestinian people?" Again, my name is Sean Donnelly. I'm a proud member of the Communist Party of the United States of America, a member of the Hudson Valley Communist Party. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak my mind tonight. Free Palestine.
I'm short. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and the people of Middletown. I've introduced myself before. My name is Sarah Ahmed and I'm a resident of Orange County. My partner works for Middletown Schools and my son attends daycare in this city. Those may or may not be compelling reasons for you all to hear me tonight, but none of those details matter as much to me as being a human and calling on fellow humans in this room with more power and more agency than me to do the right thing and demand an arms embargo resolution. Last city council meeting, I shared stories about my friends who have been desperately asking me for help. My friend Mara, whose husband was brutally murdered by our tax dollars funding this genocide in Palestine, has two little babies, Adam and Sana. Adam is a few months older than my own son. How many of y'all are parents? None of you? Really? I think, okay. I hope you're listening. Sana is three and a half. I'd like to think if we knew each other in real life, she and I would be friends. Our children would play together. I'd like to think that if any of you pass Mara or her family in a public park, you would smile at her. Maybe wave. If you have children or grandchildren, which I think you do, maybe you would even encourage your tiny humans to say hello. I share this all because fundamentally, despite our citizenship status, our nationality, our religions, our languages, our geographic locations, we are all people. And I am certain that if you saw a mother in the streets sprinting away from a military tank shooting artillery at her while she runs, holding her babies, you would do something. You would say something. And at the very least, I think you would say, "Stop. Enough. Stop the carnage. Stop the violence." For folks who might not actually be familiar, I was actually recounting the events of the Nusserat massacre, one of the thousands of massacres sponsored by our tax dollars when our so-called U.S. government created a so-called humanitarian pier that was ultimately used by soldiers as a runway to slaughter civilians seeking food and aid. I am asking each and every one of you to not treat this matter, a call for an arms embargo as something to compartmentalize and file away, to just scroll to something else on your phones. This is not something you can turn away from or plead ignorance towards. I'm begging each and every one of you to confront the reality that this is a genocide that not any one of us can fix, but not any one of us can abandon. You can take a giant step towards stopping this carnage and violence by passing a real arms embargo resolution, one that calls for ending all weapons to Israel, and with that, hopefully a measure to divest all city tax dollars towards this apartheid state. You can support a reinvestment of our city tax dollars towards programs that can help us all be housed, fed, and supported. Thank you.
I'm a little bit taller. My name is Patrick Merrill. I live up in Accord. I do business down in Middletown. Middletown was one of my first introductions. Middletown was one of my first introductions to New York. I originally grew up in New Jersey. In 1999, I was six years old. A friend of mine had an old, dried-out starfish we thought was really cool. Our innocence or our ignorance surrounding the permanency of death inspired us to soak the starfish in hopes to bring it back to life and revive it. We were excited to embark on our quest to restore what was lost to a villain reminiscent of The Fisherman and Finding Nemo, which hadn't come out yet. But 25 years later, I have no ignorance surrounding the permanency of death. I expect everyone seeing this or hearing this has lost someone near and dear to them. Children in Palestine have not had the luxury of growing up with such a profound sense of security that they might be innocent in the face of what is lost every day. However, I heard a story of a pair of young children climbing knee-deep through the rubble of their former home, seeing what they might be able to salvage. They found their family's fish still in the fishbowl alive, and they came out screaming, "We saved it, we saved it, and we're going to go back in and see if we can save the bird, too." I hope we can find some semblance of courage that these children show in facing the reality of genocide every day. If we have even a fraction of that, we owe it to those children and to our own humanity to do whatever small thing we can to end unjust massacre of tens of thousands of innocent civilians in the name of some warped sense of what it means for a nation to be secure. I'm of Irish descent, and I know—I deeply understand fear right now in America, in the world, and I know that there are folks on the other side of this argument that are experiencing fear based on information they have been fed. But I think that everybody I've met tonight that is here to advocate for this resolution to be passed would agree with Bobby Sands' quote, that "Our revenge is not something violent, our revenge is not something vengeful. Our wish is that our revenge will be the laughter of our children." Thank you.
I don't like public speaking, and I've been through a lot the last couple of weeks, so please bear with me. My name is Christine Callen. I'm a Goshen resident. I'm an independent. I don't care if half my family's Republican, half of them is Democrat. I don't think God judges by what party you come from. I was a nurse at Horton Hospital for many years, and then went on to ORMC, then I went on to travel nursing. I was a member of the Middletown Lions Club for many years. I love Middletown. I was called a baby killer coming in here by a beautiful little girl, and it killed me because I have helped deliver babies for 27 years, and I've delivered many Palestinian babies in Brooklyn and many Jewish babies, and I would give my life for any of those babies, so please don't call me. And it kills me to see little kids being brainwashed to be taught this. And I've sat with so many families of hostages, families that currently have people in captivity that they love and babies that are in captivity right now, and—free Palestine, yes, from Hamas. If Hamas were in charge, my gay siblings would be hung and killed, okay? If Hamas was in charge—this is the truth—
Point of order. Stop talking, or I'm going to end this public—good. Stop.
If Hamas was in charge—women that show their hair would be killed and hung, and they have been, and they've committed suicide. People that show their hair—
Stop. Stop right now.
People that show their hair—please let me finish. I didn't interrupt anybody else. People that show—people that show their hair would be killed. If they were women, and they have been killed, gays have been hung. These are the facts. These are the facts, and this is—and—
Point of order. We're going to stop the meeting. We're going to stop this public orientation. Point of order. Thank you. And that's it. Everybody's done. We're—we come up, you come up, you— No, 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 no. We don't—we're not going to address people. No, no, no. We—no, we don't do that. We don't do that. I don't care about rolling eyes. We respect everybody that comes up and speaks at their time, okay? The public comments, it's over. We're moving on.
This is out of control. This cannot be—
We're moving on. Point of order. Remarks of the mayor. Chief, chief, if she doesn't stop, I'm going to remove her from the council. No, it's over. In my 20 years being on this council, I have never stopped public participation. We come up here, you say what you want to say, and you move on. We're all humans. We all got kids. I have four kids. We have four kids. We have everybody. We address—for the good of the city. That's what we always say, "For the good of the city." You want to bring up what your personal beliefs of countries and whatever, that's fine. That's free speech. We allow it. A lot of people, a lot of towns, a lot of cities are already changing it, so we can not allow people to talk. I'm not that person. And you can't respect each other. Just give three minutes, whatever they want to say, as long as it's respectful, that's all you have to do. You don't have to sit here and go back and forth. I said it from the first meeting to Jason, I'll say it again, that this is our community. Where you face each other, look at each other. If you want to ceasefire, you go and work with each other, and then bring it here. Don't say "us versus them." This is—can it continue? That's not a problem. We are—we—this is what we do. We serve the city of Middletown. And forever and ever, we're going to be sitting here for the good of the city. I'm not going to change it, and we're going to move on. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to begin by thanking Ed Estrada and Superintendent Creedon, who did send me a message earlier that she wasn't feeling well, and appreciate their kind words about the actions of the city of Middletown regarding some of the certain horrific incidents that have happened in the school district over the last several weeks, and appreciate Mr. Estrada's kind words. I wasn't planning on addressing the crew tonight. This is the seventh meeting that they've been here. I think this attempt to hijack the public portion of our meetings is insulting to the residents of the city of Middletown. I heard from Goshen, Monroe, Chester, Waukegan, Poughkeepsie, several Orange County people tonight who don't even have the decency to say what town they're from, that are attempting to—and not attempting, they are hijacking this meeting. And I think the council should consider changing the forum slightly to—prior to the meeting, there's people at home that are looking and watching Channel 20, looking to find out about what I'm going to talk about next, which is our budget and some of the resolutions that are on the common council agenda tonight. And then, at the end of the meeting, suggest that if people want to come up here and speak their mind about their issues regarding—that they've been speaking about for seven weeks, or the threat from the first speaker, that we will be here every week with no new information, I think it's disgraceful, and I think we have an obligation to the people from Middletown, not Chester, Monroe, Goshen, and the Commie Party or the Communist Party, whatever way he described himself as, that we're doing a major disservice to our residents who are trying to seek information. And I would hope the council would consider changing your agenda to address specifically that, agenda items early, non-agenda items later. The—to get into our budget, have up on the screen the operations budget. We are within the tax cap once again for, I believe, the 10th or 11th straight year. We have had significant cost increase. As you can see, our operations are up from 7.4 million to 8.2 million almost. Special items are up slightly. Personal services are up close to—a close to $1 million. Employee benefit costs are up, and our debt service is up slightly. So we have 220 full-time employees. All have received pay increases. We also have other contractual obligations, such as pension, workman's comp, health insurance, and of course payroll taxes and other payroll expenses. As you can see, the—two of the areas where we had huge increases and which are the drivers of the slight increase in taxes, one is our pension, which is an increase of 8.8% over the 2024 budget, and of health insurance, which is 18.81% increase on our 2024 budget. We have made some deals with our—at least one or two of the unions offering an alternative health plan. It's working a little bit, otherwise this 18.8% would have been much larger. And keep in mind, the employee-family health plan offered by the city of Middletown, the Niship Plan, costs Middletown taxpayers over $40,000 a year. So you can see the significant cost related to—that we're facing. Of course, we did have some increases in our—in our revenues, specifically sales tax, and one other major cost that we assumed last year, but not through our operating budget, was through the use of federal ARPA funds, was ambulance service. There is a crisis in New York State with ambulance service. Many of these providers that were providing coverage to communities like the city of Middletown for no administrative cost are now charging. Last year, it was, I believe, $680,000. This year, the cost has increased to $722,000. That money is now in our operating budget, and unless there's some movement on the state and county level, seems to be a permanent expense for the residents of our city. For that, we do get two dedicated ambulances to the city of Middletown, something we didn't have quite before, but we—we do see it as a crisis. I know some of the other communities in the county are discussing contracts with providers that are in excess of $722,000 for less service, and primarily because they have less population and they have less reimbursements coming back. And that's the formula, basically, is the expenses of providing 24/7 coverage, one of BLS, which is basic life support, one ALS, which is advanced life support. Of course, the advanced life support is more expensive. Some communities are using fly cars, which also add to the cost if you're supplementing them the ambulance service, but it is—it is a major problem for—for all communities in New York State, and it's really hit the Mid-Hudson Valley really hard in this past year. Our water and sewer fund are going up about 2.25%, and our inter-fund transfers that we're using to cover debt service, that we are using some slight money from those funds. As Leonora noted, the inflation rate is 2.62%, and we're expecting a stabilized economy in 2025. We're projecting some additional water and sewer revenues beginning in 2026 from the wholesale of water and sewer services. Not a good issue to talk about during a drought, but the drought will end. And of course, there's just basic increase in supplies, maintenance supplies and demand due to inflation. So I think—I want to thank Leonora and her staff for the excellent job that she did, Mr. Massey and the council president for their participation in the budget process, along with all the department heads who were called upon to—to really not do bare bones, but to really scrutinize their budgets for 2025. Some other resolutions that are on the agenda for tonight are the authorization to close streets for the tree lighting parade. Maria Bruni will be getting into that, I'm sure. It is the day after Thanksgiving traditionally, and it continues on 11/29. We hope for a large turnout for that night, once again. And there is something that was passed at the Board of Estimate this evening, earlier in the evening, and that's a proposal from WSP, who are the traffic engineers, for $60,000 to submit an application for the Raze Grant application. Basically, what the Raze Grant is, is the—there's a fund through the state and federal dollars of about $25 million that we may be eligible for to start doing sidewalks in residential neighborhoods, replacing sidewalks. Every time there's money available, we apply. We're very hopeful that utilizing WSP to do this application, that we can be very competitive on this grant, and we're hoping that we'll be able to be successful and then start spreading out from the downtown area, as we did up onto Highland, parts of West Main, and parts of other peripheral areas in the downtown, start expanding that out into the residential neighborhoods. This is just an application to submit the grant. The grant will require a 20% match, which would be a significant investment and commitment by the city taxpayers over the next 20, 25, 30 years, whatever the bonding resolution would allow for. But I think it's necessary. Many of our neighborhoods do have sidewalks that are in horrible condition, probably go back to the '70s, some of them, with the Neighborhood Improvement Program. I believe the first ward, a lot of the sidewalks over there were done when I was a kid, so 40, 50 years ago. So we do need to address it the best we can without putting the burden on the individual homeowners. As you know, the homeowner is responsible legally for the replacement of their sidewalk. So if we're not successful with this grant, we are also applying for an additional funding through the Orange County Transportation Council, and we will be doing both simultaneously because the Orange County Transportation Council has the possibility of 95% funding for the program. So of course, if we had a choice, we would take the 95 versus the 80, but we're focused on that, and I hope the council will join us in at least authorizing the study to move forward. And when the study is complete, we can then view how much linear footage of sidewalk that we can do throughout the city. We'll try to do it fairly throughout the city, throughout each ward, and come up with a proposal that everyone can review before we make that commitment of additional $5 million potentially. And that's all I have. Any questions? Any questions? All right. Paul McCliner.
Yeah, Mayor, would you just give us a quick update on Fireman Joe?
Sure. Well, Fireman Joe, we—as you know, the—I don't want to use this word, but the Foundry is holding the statue hostage. And the—we had a contract for $107,000. The contract had to be amended because she was unable to fulfill her requirements on the stand that was put in, so we agreed on a deduction and brought it down to maybe like $70-something thousand in the $70-something thousand range. That was all agreed upon, contracts in writing. When the statue was completed, the Foundry owner, Paige Tooker—I think it's Newburgh Foundry it's called—decided that she wanted an additional $12,000. She claims that the city authorized additional work. A, we don't see any additional work outside of the original contract, and B, there was no authorization for additional work. I did ask her to—she said it was authorized by one of the former fire chiefs who started the project, Fire Chief Barber. I spoke with Chief Barber and others who were handling the project for the fire department. Chief Barber said under no circumstance did he authorize any additional work whatsoever. I spoke with Ms. Tooker on the phone. I emailed her and said, "If you have any documentation to show that the city owes this additional $12,000, send it to me. I will then bring it to the common council, and we will pay you." I've received nothing from her other than rambling on the phone, messages, and threats to actually destroy the statue if we don't pay her. We immediately then took action once we determined that we were not dealing with what appeared to be—in—we were dealing with what appeared to be an irrational person, because who does that? That we filed a litigation against her. We were supposed to have a hearing two weeks ago, and prior to the hearing, a few hours before the hearing, we reached an agreement with her attorney that—the city would pick the statue up, she would get the original balance due, which was like $3,000 and change. Her attorney made that agreement with our city attorney. They contacted the court and notified the— They contacted the court and notified the court that the hearing the next day was not required, not necessary, because both parties reached an agreement. She then reneged on that and fired her attorney. And we had another court date set for today, as a matter of fact, in Goshen. She notified the court last night that she had COVID and is unable to make it to the court. The court gave her another two weeks, so December 3rd, we will be going back, back there. We, we are requesting also the, the return of the statue and the continue of the litigation. Hopefully, the judge will see through her delay tactics. And the irony is that she's also billing us storage for the statues she's refusing to return. So it's irrational on her part, we believe. We've asked her for documentation. She produces zero. She has not even, to my knowledge, as of this morning, hasn't even responded to the court papers in, in, in writing. And so we'll see how December 3rd goes, but we're very confident that the judge is going to order her to return it. And if she destroyed anything, she'll be facing significant criminal charges.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Martha, Department Heads, Economic Development.
The tree has arrived, beautiful forty-foot spruce that was donated by Gerda Gardens out of Goshen, New York. The cutting and the transport went, went perfect. And I want to thank DPW, Jacob, Ross Mastria and his crew for having that all happen and come together to get the tree safely cut and here and installed. I want to thank also the private businesses that assisted that day, and they donated their services, JHM Tree Service, Regional Truck Services, Ariago, and Freedom Crane. They all donated their time for the cutting, the transport, the delivery, and the installation. This weekend, Harry Rotolo and Sons and members of the IBE Local Union 363 will decorate the tree. So if you want to come see that action this Saturday morning, it's cool to watch. They'll probably be starting around 8:00 AM in the morning. It'll go for a couple hours. And then also, I want to thank Chief Wantu, the Middletown Police Department, for their escort, to escort the tree in as well. And that all leads me to the tree lighting, the day after Thanksgiving, November 29th, 6:00 PM. As the mayor mentioned, we're looking forward to another big crowd this year. And I want to thank Joseph Stephanie Eileen and, and other volunteers at the bid for organizing the parade and getting things all together for that evening and decorating and so forth. And as you could tell, this is a true community event, and we're looking forward to it. And let's not forget about Small Business Saturday. There's a resolution proclaiming Small Business Saturday in the city of Middletown. And that's all I have.
Any question for Maria? All right, Maria, thank you.
You.
DPW Commissioner.
Just update about our reservoirs. Alderman Massey, seventy-three percent, that's our capacity. We're really in, in, in trouble with the water, like all the adjacent communities from New York City all the way down to our region, down to New Jersey. So we urge people, again, to conserve water, use as little as you need to, shorter showers, fill your dishwasher completely before you run it. Same with the laundry machine, fill it up, please, to try to save water as much as possible. We're, we're not at a crisis level. We've been working for two months now, our water department, with Brian Smith and Scott Mills and all our guys in there, to set up pumps to activate auxiliary sources for us. And now, hopefully with the rain coming tomorrow night, we'll have large pumps ready to convey water from some watershed into our reservoirs to fill them up. So hopefully, hopefully we'll be in a better shape, but we need much more rain than a half an inch we're talking about, and most likely, you know, usually they say rain is coming, but it doesn't come, or rain is not coming, but actually rain comes and we have floods. So, you know, that's as accurate as the forecasters can be, we're hoping. Before you tonight, there's a comment, there is a request for resolution for approving Barton and LeJude as consulting engineers for the design and construction observation services for a 24-inch finished water main that comes from the water treatment plant along 211 to Manhattan Avenue up to Oliver Avenue. We're going to try to stretch the money as much as we can. It's through three and a half million dollars through Congressman Ryan. He's been Congressman, Pat Ryan, he's been, has been great supporter to the city of Middletown infrastructure. He's given us money before, he's giving us money for this project, and he's giving us money for the future project as well, projects for the water and for the infrastructure. We're very appreciative of all his efforts. And, and with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them with the resolutions. Come before you, leave, pick up. I don't have my notes with me, but we did the fourth ward, we did the first ward. We are in the middle of the second ward now. Hopefully, we'll finish it this, end of this week, and then we'll go to the third ward, hopefully Friday or Monday.
Okay, any questions? Alden Tobin.
This is more of a thank you from Jude and I and the rest of the council for supporting the sidewalks, the mayor on Dulson. It's now people can walk to Shop Right, they can walk to work, and it's much safer and convenient for people. So I'm glad that's like finally finished. I know it takes a while, but it's, it's great to see. I hope I don't see anybody riding in their carts in the middle of the road anymore and using the sidewalks. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief.
I just want to report, we see an uprising in our calls the last couple of weeks because of the dry weather. There is a New York State burn ban out, but it seems that we are chasing illegal burns, probably averaging four calls a day on people burning in their backyards. I'm not sure if people have seen the news on what's going on in Greenwood Lake. But, and speaking of that, we did help out roughly around thirty-six hours down in Greenwood Lake, three different tours, 12-hour shifts, whether it was a standby and the last time we went down to protect houses as the fire was moving towards them. Our three new career guys, you know, obviously they graduated, I think, in July. They are now officially off break-in. They are on their assigned apparatus as of the end of October. They're doing well. The department as a whole, we've taken in this year fifteen new members, volunteers. That's, that's a help, and not just taking them in, but they've stayed around, they're showing interest. We're trying to keep them as interested as possible. You know, so, and that's where I'm at. Any questions?
Chief, can you just address the overtime resolution that we have?
Yes. Well, we ran short this year. We've had three hires that were in the academy that took some overtime, not, you know, a tremendous amount, but it wasn't foreseen, and, you know, they got overtime every week, every day. We were down to twenty-two career out of twenty-eight with seven apparatus. So operating in the guidelines of what we were asked to operate on with, you know, the staffing per day, with, I think we've had two guys on, well, one was on a disability, and we've had now, we have another one that's on a long-term 207A injury. We promoted a fire inspector that took him off the apparatus and put him into the fire inspection position. So we had a lot of, we had a lot of open, open spots. And, you know, when vacations come in and the relief days and sick days and personal days come in to keep the five apparatus in service, you know, it was covered with overtime.
And I, one more, coats and boots. I've received phone calls that said, morning and afternoon, we did not cut any coats and boots.
I don't know, I don't even have a copy of 25's budget.
Okay.
I don't know where that came.
We also received a, a grant from SCOOP's office for fifty-two thousand dollars for 2025.
Yes.
That we passed on October 14th. So I don't know, we're not, there's no issue with coats and boots. All the firemen have their gear that they need?
As of right now, we do gear checks, we do gear inventory every year. The career guys give us their, once a year, daily, who needs. If we get gear destroyed, you know, it's got to be replaced. Per NFPA, every 10 years, it's got to be replaced. Fifteen new members, you know, if you want to keep them around, you got to outfit them as firemen, you know, and the gear's not cheap. Now it's up to, I believe Chief Eli is in charge of gear and equipment, and I want to say it's somewhere almost five thousand dollars a set. You know, and that's not with the leather boots and the leather helmets. That is plastic rubber boots and the, just the turnout gear, pants and coats that we specked out.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the chief? All right, thank you, chief. City Treasurer.
I am, again, I would appreciate the approval of the budget for 2025. I do want to say thank you. The department heads, the mayor, my team, they have been very agile with me this year as we have tried to maintain the budget within the tax cap, especially in today's economy with inflation, and it's really challenging. So I really want to say thank you to the department heads for working with me and being agile. We did open the budget up a lot sooner this year. We started the budget process as soon, early as May. So that was a little bit different from prior years. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions? Leonora? All right, thank you, great job. Police chief.
First, I'd like to just respond to what Mr. Estrada said this evening. From the police department, from my team, we couldn't be happier with the relationship we have with the school. It's something that we haven't always had, but the collaboration, the support that we have currently pays dividends to our community as a whole. So we're, we're very, very grateful for that, and I'd like to thank them on the leadership of Superintendent Creed and the school board as a whole. Definitely appreciate that. Regards to this morning, I did communicate with the council this morning in regards to an incident that we had just before 7:00 AM at the intersection of Liberty Street and Wickham Avenue. Unfortunately, it was a shots fired incident. To our knowledge, no one has been injured. We're not aware of any injuries as of this point. What I am happy to tell you is that we did make an arrest on that. My staff worked diligently today, from the first responding officers all the way through the detectives, followed down a lot of leads, followed up on a lot of things today, and concluded with a successful arrest of an 18-year-old Middletown resident, Dylan Saldana. He's being charged with criminal possession of a weapon in the second degree, which is a C felony, reckless endangerment in the first degree, which is a D felony. Throughout the investigation, we actually recovered the loaded handgun. It's an illegally possessed handgun, and we believe that is the gun that was used this morning. So great job by my staff today, and it's an unfortunate incident, but at least we were able to bring it to closure. So other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions.
Any question for the chief? Congratulations, chief, thank you. Alden Massey.
Chief, we're, we're all set up for Saturday. We have the agility for both your department and the fire department.
Yes, this Saturday, we will have staff there. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. City clerk.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to thank the countless number of poll workers and election workers that staffed all the polls in the city of Middletown a couple of weeks ago. We had a very successful election here. I also want to thank the community for supporting the Low Sap referendum, increasing the Low Sap Volunteer Firefighters Award, I guess it is, Andrew? I want to make sure I said that right. But I want to thank the Board of Elections and Jalissa at the senior center for letting us use the senior center, and the fire department for letting us use the firehouse. Everything went really well, and we're looking forward to another exciting election season next year.
All right. Any question for the city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances?
We still have a public hearing open on the proposal to change Prospect Street heading west from North Street to Beacon Street to a one-way street.
Chief and Jacob, do we have any new information that we need to address?
If there's any input from the public, would you have?
Anyone from the public on making Prospect Street heading west from North Street to Beacon Street a one-way? Oh, come on, Sue.
Hi, I'm Susan DePue. I live at 57 Prospect Street. I, I commend the council for trying to make things safer on the street that I live on. But I would have a suggestion that you make more stops. When I go down that road to the bottom of the hill, it is like a drag race. So I'm not sure stopping with stop signs is going to make it harder, but I think it's...
We're not doing stop signs. We're changing it to one direction going up the hill.
Okay. Well, if that's what you're going to do, I don't think that's a good thing to do. I think it would be better to go down the hill.
All right. Based on our information from our engineers and car accidents.
Okay. I'm just telling you my, my thoughts.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the, from the council? Alden McCliner.
Thank you. I discussed this with the commissioner, and earlier tonight, just a little bit with the mayor. And my suggestion, I, I just didn't see the point in making it one-way up to Beacon Street. You know, Beacon Street is not used much in either direction. It would take traffic down to Linden Place or, or all the way down Beacon to the other end when you get to the parkland. And so I didn't know why you wouldn't just make it one-way from North Street to Linden Avenue, which is a four-way stop. That, that, there doesn't seem to be a need to make it one-way than going up to Beacon Street. I, I just didn't understand that. And commissioner, did you want to mention that at all or, or give us your thoughts? And also, the mayor said, maybe we, because that way you get to Linden, but then you go right or left, you go down to the Wickham Avenue intersection, which is five-way, or the other way, I guess, down to Lau Avenue, you know, there's no good alternative there. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I tend to agree with your point of view, which is, you know, you can cut it down so that the one-way will be from North Street up to Linden Avenue. You don't have to go all the way to Beacon. Or, or another point of view, which is just, just as well, is just to go all the way up to Highland Avenue. So either way it will serve, our concern is that block between the steep hill going down from Prospect Street heading east towards Wickham Avenue. That's the block we're most interested in, to make it one-way, so you're not coming down anymore, you're going up.
Going up.
Yeah. So if you, if you guys would, would like to change it, either all the way up to Highland or all the way up to, up to Linden, we believe it will serve the purpose that we intend with the proposed change.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but just going up to Beacon Street didn't make any sense to me, so.
Alden Massey?
I spoke with the chief on this on a few occasions, and I spoke with the mayor. I believe if we're going to do it, I believe that we should go all the way up, make it one-way all the way up to Highland Avenue. I would be more in favor of that or just not doing it, one of the two.
Do you want to make a motion to change it?
We can keep the public hearing open.
All right.
I, I think we're better off, we keep the public hearing open and we get more people, give us more of an, some time to think about it and talk to residents and see.
You guys have a constituent meeting coming up?
Just, you can send them out.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be after, yeah, next council meeting.
Okay.
It's been that way, it's been, we've lived with it for all these years, if we have to wait another month or two or three months before we make a final decision. before we make a final decision, I'd like to put more effort into it and get the feedback, especially from you guys with your meetings, and then come to a conclusion. So I suggest we keep the public hearing open.
Okay. Public hearing remains open. Remarks of Alderman. Alden Tobin.
I'd like to thank the mayor, Lenora, and the finance committee for putting together the budget and staying under the tax gap for another year, year after years. And so I know it's not easy, but we do greatly appreciate that as taxpayers. And I'd also like to thank Chief Awanchu and the police department for keeping us safe. Happy to hear that it was quickly resolved. Thank you.
Alden Johnson.
Yes. Congratulations. You guys did a wonderful job in the budget this year. I thank you for your hard work and your, your team. And also, we DPW Street Department did a wonderful job in the fourth ward picking up. We had a lot of leaves out there this year. These gentlemen did a wonderful job picking up the leaves, so we're greatly thankful for what they did for us. Thank you.
Alden Johnson.
Thank you. Fireman Joe, so you have a business that provides a service. You sign a contract. You start the service. You want to increase the scope of service. You fax me a document I sign off on and you increase the scope of service. Sounds like extended operating procedure. Case closed. With respect to Good Cause, Mayor and Commissioner Finance of Commerce of the Universe, and I met with Bravon on the 7th, was a good conversation. I emailed him on the 10th the following greetings. I enjoyed our recent opportunity to engage in substantive dialogue regarding the Good Cause issue and pending legislation here in Middletown. During the meeting of November 4th, one of your co-speakers stated residents are being evicted left and right. This speaks to the issue of disaggregating any available data to move the conversation from empirical theory to evidence-based analysis. I hope you can gather these stats which we talked about. He has corresponded twice, first with some county numbers, and second that they're in the process of gathering some numbers from the New York State eviction dashboard. So I think we're having a good dialogue. We're moving forward. With respect to the public comment this evening, between the school board and this board, I've been in public life for more than 25 years. I served as board president at the school board for six years. I conducted meetings that would be at very least called contentious. I support the president's actions this evening. I do not support changing the protocol or the agenda. Yes, we have an obligation to hear from the public, but that's a two-way street. This evening, I heard a young lady say that she doesn't care what I think. Those were her words. I don't care what you think. I heard a young lady that said if I don't agree with her, I may not be human. I heard a grown woman use expletives. And I heard a speaker who was actually shouted down and unable to finish her remarks, which then denied other people who came to speak the opportunity. It's a two-way street. We are here to listen. We should listen. If you haven't had 40 people to talk three minutes apiece, I'm in. But it's a two-way street. The public needs to participate in an orderly and proper and respectful manner, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Alden Ray.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, because I wholeheartedly agree. I also think when we speak about the two-way street unlistening is that you come to the podium tonight and say that we're not listening to you, but I don't think you've listened to us. This is your seventh meeting. I believe it was two meetings ago that we passed a ceasefire resolution where we supported peace in the region. Because it did not have the verbiage that you specifically wanted does not mean that we were not heard. You were heard, we acted. I am a mother of four, and I feel like I have toddlers all over again. Where you've been given an answer, but you refuse to accept it. So you will continue to stomp your feet and yell and be asked to be heard again in hopes that your answer has changed. My no never became a yes to my toddlers. I don't think our answer here as a council should change. We are not going to be bullied into becoming a free public access channel for this group to come and, as the mayor said, hijack this meeting. I said, our time is spent here on city business. And I represent, I am sorry, I do not represent people from Poughkeepsie, from Port Jervis, from Goshen or Monroe. I represent the people who live here in the city of Middletown, one of whom walked out of this meeting tonight because she couldn't stay here all night and wait to get to the part of the meeting that she was here for, which is what's happening here in the city of Middletown. I am not a foreign policy expert. I don't claim to be one. My personal feelings on that issue are relevant to this conversation tonight. Because we do not, the, the spreading of misinformation at this podium is reckless and is everything that's wrong with our political discourse when you twist information to support what you're trying to say. Middletown does not send money to Israel. Middletown does not intercept federal income tax money. Middletown does not have the option to say, we're gonna spend that money that you get from Middletown on something here. That's just not how it works. So this gross misunderstanding of government is also concerning. And I don't think that our meeting is an opportunity for you to spread misinformation. From people who don't even reside here, it's extremely frustrating. It's frustrating for my constituents who reach out to me because they couldn't stay up late enough to get the information they tuned into this meeting for. And for the woman who left this evening. Those are the people that we represent. You come here and you're asking, yeah, you know what, I struggle to control my facial expressions because repeatedly, meeting after meeting, there's been at least one to two speakers who come here and insult this body. And then you expect to be heard? It's frustrating. I'm sorry, we've been more than patient, but we have answered your questions. And we have made the move that we are gonna make. And I, the, the lack of respect for that, I, I I disagree with you respectfully, my partner Alderman Johnson. I do think that this needs to be moved to the end of the meeting. Because for the people who watch it, the information they need is what we're doing right now. And then they have the option of shutting it off when they're done. That's their right. This is city business here. And we are not in a position in the city of Middletown to enact the changes you're asking for. It's not even a power we possess as a board. So it's extremely frustrating and to have you continue to come and to take over this meeting, it's frustrating. I'm sorry. That's really all I have to say.
Alden McClaner.
Thank you. I want to thank the election workers. And I think New York State elections went pretty smoothly. Not happy about the results nationwide, but they, they are what they are. I, with respect to Alderman Johnson, I still hope we can come up with a Good Cause eviction resolution that'll keep people being thrown out by ridiculous rent increases and that we, we come up with something that'll work in Middletown. So I, I still support Good Cause however we can get it. I thank also Leonora because they, she has done an amazing job on the budget and working with people. And it is, it is, as we know, it is not an easy job. And it sort of makes your head spin going over every single item in the budget, but so for everyone who worked on that, thank you very much. We don't fund what's going on in Sudan. We don't send arms to Syria. We don't support those violations of human rights. We do send billions of dollars of arms to Syria and it, to Israel, and it is against our, it's against the Leahy law. It is against our Arms Control Act. It is against every, every reasonable custom and weapons law that we have in this country. Where you don't give weapons to a country that is violating human rights, that is stopping international aid from being distributed, that is just basically living outside the Geneva Convention, outside any human rights, and it's just living its, its own law. So other cities have passed ceasefire resolutions and no, we don't, you know, that's more something for Congressman Ryan. It's more something for Senator Gillibrand and Senator Schumer. It's, it's more, and we just, we're gonna send, apparently, if he's confirmed, Mike Huckabee to be the ambassador to Israel. And Mike Huckabee supports the end times. He supports the second coming. He supports the, you know, rapture. And so whatever he can do to make the world end sooner, that's what he wants to do. I, I just, I don't, you know, I, I know what's behind that, but we'll, we'll see in the confirmation process, but this, we, we are where we are. I don't know whether this body passing, you know, we didn't, we passed a resolution asking for supporting global peace in the world, and who doesn't support global peace? And asking for the unconditional release of all the hostages, but that's not gonna happen without a ceasefire, so. Asking us to, as so many other cities across this country have done, to ask our representatives to support a ceasefire resolution. I don't know if it'll have any effect. And I have had complaints from constituents about people lining up and repeating and repeating basically the same thing. So I know the county, the way the county does their remarks, and, and in our charter, we don't have to allow any public speaking. But as President Marika said, we've always tried to allow, for the good of the city, it's in the resolution we adopt when we, when we take, take office at the beginning of our terms. And we also pledge to uphold the Constitution of the United States. So what the county does is they have people speak specifically on resolutions at the beginning of the meeting. And then if they want to speak at the end of the meeting, they have them speak on anything else they have for the good of the county. But they do not allow repetition. So if someone has already made that point, you are not allowed to remake it. And, and so, you know, that's, that's something for us to consider. That's neither one side nor the other. That's recognizing that yes, I have had complaints from people who've had to stay up late and couldn't stay up because of what was said in the public speaking period running so late. So I don't know how we resolve it, and it isn't issue that when you look at detonating huge explosive devices in civilian populations, that's never allowed by international law, but we have a state that has no regard for international law. So I, I don't know. I don't know, and I know the horror of October 7th, but I, I don't, the collective punishment is not it, it is not allowed under the UN Charter. And so I don't know where we go from here, but I urge people to clarify their message, simplify their resolution, and, and try and resolve that part of the issue for us. Thank you.
Alden Green.
Thank you very much. Leonora, we hear nothing but your praises from auditors, from department heads. You'll hear them from me because I deal with you in a lot of ways. I can't read a budget that well. I love to see these highlights. It kind of puts it all down to the layman's terms and something I know everyone here agrees on and appreciates, and to all the department heads who have to, you know, really look at, at where you can make cuts and where you can make adjustments and having to deal with issues such as, you know, overtime and that. It's, it's, wow, it takes a lot. I've always known that a city is just one big business, basically, but it really is just something else, and everyone just makes it seem so effortless every year. So congratulations to all the department heads, Leonora, your team, and Finance Committee, Board of Estimate on a successful budget for 2025. Thank you.
Alden Witt.
Thank you very much. I'm very Middletown-centric tonight. I would like to invite this, this council as well as our community to tune in on December 3rd at 7 o'clock for Recreation and Parks Committee meeting. Superintendent Berthoff will be here, and she will share with our community all of the great things that her department and great programs that her department and her team have done during the course of 2024. It'll probably be about 20 minutes, and everyone will get a chance to ask questions, of course, but it's, it's really nice to see the positive things that, that the city is doing for our young people, and this is, we'll have it all in a night, very neat 20-minute presentation, I would assume. Also, I want to congratulate our, our varsity football team who reached the Section 9 Class AA championship game in Kingston. And this was not a gimme or a guarantee by any stretch of the imagination. And our kids persevered and, and battled and stuck together and ended up in a situation that they should be very proud of. It didn't work out the way they would have liked, but they did a fantastic job. So I think that that recognition is, is deserved. This past weekend at Middletown High School, we hosted, the school district hosted the New York State Boys Soccer Championship Tournament, and it's been something that the district has done since 2010, with the exception of, of the COVID year. And what this is, our city donated, or made a $5,000 contribution to that cause for this to help offset expenses. And this involved 6,000 or so people coming into our community, spending their money in our community. And there were six classifications, six state champions, and it's a very positive thing for us. And it's part of the support. I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do it. We are, the district is going to do this again in two weeks for the New York State Football Semifinals. And then in the spring, the Boys Lacrosse Semifinals and then State Track Championships. So there are four opportunities for the entire state to converge on this area and, and spend their money. So thank you very much for listening and have a wonderful evening.
Alden Massey.
Couple of things. One, I want to thank Alderman Tobin for Veterans Day. I wasn't in the area. I certainly appreciate you representing the mayor, council president, and the entire council. And your remarks were very well received. Thank you very much for that. Two, on the budget, once again, like to thank the mayor, the council president, all the department heads, and certainly the finance department. As finance chairman, it's always nice to see the budget come in the way it did, and I appreciate it, and I'm hoping everyone will support it tonight. And finally, on the presentations, the for the good of the city. You come up here. Many of you accuse us of not listening, and I don't want to repeat what Kate said, but the truth of the matter is, obviously, we listen. You may not like what we, our final decision was. I'm not sure what you want to do about that. You certainly can keep coming. I, I would hope that if you do, you'd be more respective and respectful of each other and certainly of us. I'm also wondering, those of you who aren't Middletown residents, are you going to your local government centers, their meetings and speaking? I can understand one of the reasons of coming here. And I certainly take blame for this because these cameras and this, these meetings being televised was introduced by me several years ago, and we have it. And I'm sure many of you chose our meetings because you can get more publicity out of it. But I'm hoping that you take advantage of your own communities. This isn't helping anything. We've made our decision- We've made our decision. If you haven't heard us, I'm not sure what else we can do for you. I don't imagine we are going to change anything. So in the future, if you want to come and the council president is so inclined to allow you to speak, let's let everybody speak. Let's not do what was done tonight. You may not like what some other person says. Well, guess what? Maybe they don't like what you're saying. But at least let them speak their mind as long as you keep it respectful. You can keep coming, and the threat is that you're going to, and I guess that's fine and dandy. I don't think you're going to get anything changed, but once again, you have the opportunity because we are televised, and I believe that has a lot to do with why you chose Middletown. By the way, I just got some information, and I want to pass this along. One of the speakers said that there were over 100 communities that passed this full resolution. On the ceasefire, correct? Someone came up here and spoke that. Now let me tell you this. As of 2022, there were 90,837 local government units in the United States. So when you come up and say that 100 throughout the United States passed it, I mean, obviously there are others that didn't. We passed what we believed was right. Accept it, don't accept it. It's not going to change. Thank you.
New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing the issuance of an additional $10 million bonds of the city of Middletown, Orange County, New York, to pay costs in connection with the ONW railroad station rehabilitation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin. Jon Francois. Johnson. Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the transfer of funds within the fire department budget to cover overdrafts in the fire department overtime line.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey adopting the city of Middletown's 2025 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing a three-year agreement with Empress for ambulance services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing the awarding of bids for surplus vehicles equipment to Auctions International.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by older woman Ray authorizing the re-leving of delinquent 2023 water and sewer bills.
Resolution sponsored by older woman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state program, aid eligible costs of transportation, federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Marciocelli. Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois authorizing to conduct a public hearing on a change to the zoning code as it pertains to single-family dwellings.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing amendment to city code to prohibit parking of detached trailers on city streets.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Well done.
Aye.
Ray.
Here, here. Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey proclaiming Saturday, November 30th, 2024, a small business Saturday in the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing street closures for the 2024 tree lighting parade.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jon Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
My favorite night of the year.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.